All the special meeting in the Quincy Park Board is an official order on May 22nd. The air of Westview Golf Course. Thank you, mother. Here.
Here.
Blake?
Here.
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 Here. Here. The board is present. Looking at the agenda, obviously, everyone is here to discuss Westview. I wanted to make a few comments to set the stage before turning the microphone over to our staff. Patty McLaughlin, the commissioner, is not present tonight. She had a out-of-town vacation scheduled when we scheduled this meeting, so I believe she's probably going to try to watch the streaming video or at least watch or listen to the audio afterwards. Chris Blakeman needs to leave at 6:45 for another commitment, so I just wanted to point that out, that that's planned when you see him sneak away. At the end of the meeting, we have a survey that will be distributed for everyone to fill out, so we can get your thoughts and opinions if you don't speak to us tonight. I was hesitant to pass that out now, because I'd like for everyone to keep an open mind as you listen to everything that's being said. Speaking of surveys, let me put that thought aside. The handout that's available, there's a couple more up here. It's also available on the Quincy Park District website, so when you go home tonight or tomorrow, if you wanted to see it, you could, or you can share it amongst yourselves, but I think we printed 60 copies and got a full house. As we move here in a few minutes after the presentation by staff, our intention is to suspend the rules. So, the technicality on that is normally at our meetings, we allow public input, but there's no dialogue so much between the board, staff, and the public speaker. If we did that tonight, I think it'd be counterproductive, because you guys are going to have a lot of questions and need explanations, and that's what we're here for. So, we'll do the suspension of rules, that it will allow dialogue between yourselves and us, but I believe we need to, you know, maintain proper decorum, one person speak at a time, and so forth, so it can be recorded and everybody can hear and follow along. This is a special meeting, which also has a stipulation that we have to stay to our agenda. Now, the agenda, if you've seen it, just simply says, "Westview Golf Course," which is broad. If you have an issue pertaining to park district business not related to Westview, I'm not going to stop you from speaking about it, however, staff and the board will not, and we are not allowed to, comment or discuss that. So, I just ask for everyone's sake that we stay focused on Westview, and in particular, this proposal, okay? Because everybody's here to discuss that. If you have another issue, feel free to contact a board member after the meeting, or staff, or come to a regular meeting. You know, we try to give you plenty of opportunities, but for everyone's sake, we'll try to stay on topic. As I said, I'd like for everyone to keep an open mind. You know, we've seen the proposals, you guys have seen it, there's been a lot of messages and things going around town in the last two months. Some of it's accurate, some of it's not, despite what's out there. I mean, I personally have not made up my mind. Several commissioners I know are still on the fence. So, this is not predetermined, we're not just going through the motions here to pretend that we're interested in your opinion, because I truly don't have my opinion formed yet, and I know others are in the same boat. A little bit of background of how we got here, at the March 13th meeting, staff presented our finance committee with a proposal. It was reviewed and discussed for approximately 10 minutes. Then, that was handed to the rest of the board at our full meeting that evening with no discussion. And then, subsequent to that, an email was sent to the season pass holders as a survey. And I've heard the complaint that I didn't get the survey. Well, there might have been reasons for that, which we don't really need to delve into. The reality is, that was not meant to be a scientific or comprehensive survey. It was staff testing the waters, trying to gauge some input early on, just to sense where the people were at. If you didn't get that email, we apologize. If you've got it, if you want to update your address or send it to staff, that's great, but the complaint that you didn't get the survey in the email is water under the bridge at this point. Then, at our April 10th meeting, was the first time the board was prepared to discuss the proposal, and it was clear to us that we needed to have this type of meeting. A special meeting focused on this topic, because there was so much interest in it. So, the board did not spend a lot of time at the April meeting, or at our May 8th meeting, going over this. It was, you know, very brief. So, that's what kind of led up to this point. We're here to listen to you. I've got a list of speakers. If you haven't signed this list, or signed up, I believe it's still around the corner, we're going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you are making valid points and there's discussion, at my discretion, I suppose, I can allow it to go longer than three minutes, but as it stands now, we've got 15 speakers signed up, so hopefully in three minutes, you can make your point and allow the next person to have their turn. With that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to staff, and they're going to go through the presentation that you see in your handout.
I'm just going to start by saying that the plan and any figures you see here are basically a proof of concept, I guess I'll call it. They're not, you know, Jack Nicklaus didn't work on this plan, I and Matt Berry worked on this plan. So, it's just the idea to see what would fit, and to get some preliminary figures and those sort of things. So, if we continue to move forward, it would get refined, so exact hole locations and exact this and that. If you spend a lot of time worrying about that, we're going to get all bogged down, because we haven't got to that level of detail. We don't know how much we're exactly, we're going to charge for a bucket of balls. We put a number in, we don't know how many sizes the bucket of balls will have, et cetera. So, those are all, if we continue to move forward, kind of ideas that we'll get in more detail. So, I just wanted to bring that up first. So, this is our proposal. Matt's going to go into more detail, but it would be to add a quality golf learning facility, driving range, practice areas, and that sort of thing, so someone could come in and do, from a beginner level, and work up to a pretty good game. It would redevelop the 19 through 27 holes as a 31 par, just over 2,000-yard course. It's currently a par 34 course at about 2,700 yards. I'm just going to cover finances. I first want to point out, because every once in a while, it comes up, Westview does not support other district operations. In fact, Westview is supported, to some extent, by taxpayers. Every once in a while, we hear that, well, if we wouldn't transfer all that money out of Westview, it would have plenty of money. It's not true, that's not what is happening. In fact, this graph shows the level of support we provided since 2008 for Westview. You can see many years, it's well over $100,000 there. In addition to this direct support, which is normally a purchase of equipment, a mower, those sort of things for Westview, Westview's payroll processing, some of its insurance, its social security, et cetera, is all paid for by funds that do not come from Westview. So, it's a subsidized facility, to some extent. Happy to do it, it's a great facility, but I just wanted to put that to rest, so if you ever hear somebody say, "That's the problem at Westview," it's not the problem, that they don't know the right numbers. This is part of the reason we're looking at this. Obviously, we would hope it would be an improvement, and turn a park district facility into a learning facility for youth and for beginners, but this is also a factor. This is Westview's toll-rounded golf from 2004 to now, and you can see the trend is down. Last year was up, primarily because we played a whole lot of golf in January through March period. We're currently down over 5,000 rounds during that same period. I think that means that our cap on this year is about 42,000 rounds. It's about as high as we could get this year, under any circumstances. This is our season pass sales, just throwing that up, just to show it's kind of a curve also. It sometimes jumps based on what the pass offerings are, but also, the trend line is not really good there either. And then, this is just a, something that maybe some business might do in the same circumstances. This is taking that trend line, and you extend it out, and assume that nothing's going to interfere with that, and you figure out where it's going. So, that's a fitted trend line. And somewhere around 2020, 2019, we hit about 38,000 rounds of golf as an average year. That 38,000 is currently, if we kept our prices equal to rates of inflation, et cetera, is the place where we would hit break even, not to pay for capital improvements, mowers and things like that, but just to make our operational costs, we need to make, do about 38,000 rounds of golf, as we currently work. And I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and he's going to go through some national trends in the actual course.
Can everyone hear me okay? This is, and this one's tough to see, so if you've got it in your handout. This is a chart that shows the golfers in millions, and anybody that's played one time, they're defined as a golfer, and it reached a peak of over 30 and 1/2 million in about 2003, and it's just been slowly declining since then. And right now, it's down to 26 million. Every year, the National Golf Foundation, along with the PGA of America, track these types of figures, and if you can read that, 2012 was the seventh consecutive year that golf course closures outpaced golf course openings. So, there was 13 and 1/2, 18-hole equivalent course openings versus 154 and 1/2 closures for a net negative of 141. The PGA of America, the past four or five years, hired an independent consulting company out of Boston, I believe, and spent a lot of money doing this, and researching the trend that golf has been taking. And so, in the last two years, the PGA of America has developed, it's called Golf 2.0, and the way they describe it is, what the PGA of America and golf courses did for the past 150 years, that was Golf 1.0. Now, they're going to Golf 2.0. And what it is, is an initiative to get golfers back. Through this study, they found that there is many reasons why golfers have quit the game, never started the game, or lapsed, as they call it. And they're trying to find ways and initiatives to bring those golfers back, to develop new golfers. And at the bottom of the screen, you can see, they want to focus to make the game more relevant, friendly, fun, welcoming to all, basically to the families, and that's what we're trying to do. To reshape the perception and the image that golfers had, they always, one of the responses in their survey that they did was, they found that, they thought that golfers were elitist, and new golfers didn't feel welcome. And so, we have to adapt to changing consumer profiles and preferences to make golf quicker, more fun, and more family-friendly. What was that, about six weeks ago, we brought in some, three PGA professionals. Two of them are now part of the National Development Program, and one was out of Plano, Texas, and one was out of Chicago area, and then we had Josh Rowley, who's the executive director of the Gateway PGA Section. We came in and kind of showed them our plans, again, they're not done very professionally, but we showed them our plans, and talked with them, visited with them, they saw our facility, and I'll just read this. Their opinion, all three of them had the same opinion, "It is our opinion from a player development, growth of the game standpoint, is that by adding a driving range and reconfiguring the existing nine-hole executive-length course from the existing space would have an overwhelmingly positive impact for the facility." What we also learned from them, what's very popular now, is a lot of facilities are doing this, and they gave us five or six that they could just think of off the top of their head, that have done the same type of thing. And what's very popular now is what they call, and Jack Nicklaus, I think, said it as well, is using bunny slopes. So, courses and facilities are using a driving range to get people introduced to the game of golf. Once they feel comfortable with that, then they transition them into maybe four or five really simple holes. Once they get comfortable there, transition them into nine shorter executive holes, and once they feel comfortable there, then get them onto a Regulation 18-hole course. And again, that fits perfectly into our plan, that's what we're wanting to do. Is this something that you want to go on here?
Yeah. So, when we looked at all these, and also with the benefit perhaps of having a learning facility fit the mission of the park district, you know, you can look at these numbers and hope they don't work, so there's always a do-nothing option, and that would be, the question I would have is, if we choose to do nothing, would it be because you don't believe that decline is going to hit us the same way, that it'll stabilize or reverse? Do you think Westview will be able to just go ahead and keep up its fees, and even if there is a decline of golfers reduced, or do you have some other reason there? Now, the other thing would be to do something, to assume the trend is there. Obviously, there's also a middle road, which is to monitor and see, which you could also go, but this plan is the do-something option. So, add new sources of income, driving ranges and lessons, and also, at the same time, increase rounds by offering more variety in course, holes, time, play, price points, et cetera, there. And so, that's kind of what drove us here. So, the proposal would be to add this facility that we've gone over, all-weather driving lanes. What we're referring to there is that there would be a cemented area accessible with mats, so that when it's too rainy, or even snowy, or anything else, the idea is, most of the time, you'd be hitting off grass. I think that's the ideal for everybody, and we tried to make it wide enough and deep enough that we could keep moving that around and do it. But, when, in climate weather's bad, we would have this facility where we could go ahead and, you know, you could come out on a snowy day, but bright sunny day with snow on the ground, and in January, when nothing else is open, and hit a bucket of balls off of the mats that we blew off with our snow blowers, or whatever. And again, a full-service practice area with unusual lie practice areas, you can do a sidehill lie, uphill lie, whatever, sand practice area, and an area for lessons practice that you can see on the diagram. And again, the idea then, too, is the redeveloped 19 through 27 offers a somewhat different golf experience. For most golfers, there'll be holes there that everyone, you're going to take out a full driver. I cannot hit a 300-yard drive. I usually need about four shots to get 300 yards. So, it adds a somewhat different course, so instead of having, I've heard some people say, "Well, we need to keep the nine the same, because the nines are almost equal." The question you'd, I would have back would be potentially, you could consider that to be a drawback, maybe you want to have a different variety, because not everybody's ready to do the full-size course, if you know what I mean. If you're Six Flags, you don't advertise it. I have three roller coasters that are exactly identical. You would have a kiddie roller coaster, or a different one, and a different one, and different ones, so maybe that's a better thing, I don't know. These are the benefits that we've identified potentially, which is increased revenue from the driving range, increased lessons, group, individual, and also, get more golfers then to transition through training and then move on to playing golf. Variety of holes, quicker course offerings, develop more golfers who then transition from practice to the course, and then move on to the nines, maybe they have higher level of skill. So, by making the third round more appealing, and potentially have a better price point, meaning less expensive as they play it, that should help the pace of play for the golfers on 1 through 18, in that they have an option now. Right now, the current pricing of the third nine is, it's identical, so why not go out whatever your golf skill is on tee-off on one right now? So, this gives us a chance to vary that little, multiple variety of pricing options, you know, with, you know, a rounded golf with a bucket of balls, special, that sort of thing. They're even talking about that nine holes aren't absolutely required anymore, that especially on the third nine, you pick how many you're going to play. "I'm going to go hit two big buckets of balls, and then I just want to play three holes, so maybe we just have an option for that. Great, it's a dollar a hole, whatever." So, we haven't really figured out all the pricings, but it gives us a lot more variety. And then, obviously, a benefit to Westview is that this added traffic in and around the area drives traffic, both to the players who own the pro shop, and we have reduced maintenance costs. We have some ability potentially for some of the par threes to do a forced carry, reduce some of the watering. You know, if it's 130-yard par three, you can have that center section that potentially doesn't get fully mowed and groomed, because most people can just carry that, but have good generous landing areas on either side, and potentially reduce the maintenance costs. Do you want to go through this?
Sure.
Again, this is just a talk.
Yeah. Again, this is not done very professionally, but to the best that we could do it. And we looked this over, Ed, Rick and I, and tried to find a good flow where you wouldn't have to finish and go 150 yards back to the starter, back to the pro shop. So, number one, which is currently number 19, it stays exactly the same, 292 yards. We wanted to keep four, you know, as many par fours there as we could. There is some big hitters here, but I can only think of about three to five in the city of Quincy that can actually drive that green. So, it's definitely a whole use of driver on, just like everyone currently has. Hole number 20, which would, we would turn that into a very short par three, and then number three would be a 300-yard par four. So, again, nearly the same length as the current number 19. 21, which would be the new number four, would stay exactly the same. Again, that's a 380-yard par four. And this is an area after that hole, is we've had different variations, and again, this is just what we decided to put up here. There's another option that we had. But, the number five hole, which is number 20, what is that, 23? No, 22, we've got that broken down into two separate holes, 110-yard par three, then 180-yard par three. And then, the normal number 23 now would stay exactly the same, and that's a 316-yard par four. And then, we wanted to utilize 26 green there, and we've made that 105-yard par three. And one thing that we definitely wanted to keep is hole number 27, because that's one of the best par threes in town, and that's over 200 yards. So, we wanted to keep that there. So, that's kind of the flow. We're eliminating 25, 26, and 24, but we'd still use number 25 from the bottom of the hill on up, maybe the last 80 to 100 yards, as a short game area, where you could still go out there and hit balls into the green, you could use the green as a short game practice area. That's what a lot of golfers do right now anyway, they park on the lower level, go up there and chip and putt, because that's a great green. And then, you can see the driving range, the tee area here is right off of the lower parking lot. We wanted it to be close, so you're not having to walk 100 yards to the teeing box, so you can park in the lower lot, go to the practice facility. And again, we haven't worked out all the details yet, but we would have some target greens, we'd also want to have in some practice sand traps, that they're not on that photo, some unusual lies. If you've ever been in a nice driving range, they've got like church pews, where you can work on a sidehill lie, downhill lie, uphill lie, it's just a nice feature to practice. So, I think that explains it. Now, again, this picture up here, that was just a photo we took off the internet. We're not envisioning using net all the way around, I don't think, we haven't really discussed that yet. We didn't plan on using lights either, we didn't really discuss that either, but those were not something that we even considered at this time. But, again, like Ed said earlier, the back row would be cement, so you could use mats when the weather was bad. But, one thing that we found out in the last couple of months, talking with a lot of driving ranges, the two most important things were hitting off real grass and having good balls. So, those are two things that we wanted to definitely do. Frequently asked questions. Do you want me to just to read through those?
Yeah. Read the note first.
Okay. Hopefully, everyone can see this, but I'm going to read through, the very top line there in red, it says, "Note, during the renovation year, all tournaments and leagues would need to make other arrangements." Number one, will we still be able to host the Little Peoples' rounds that use 19 through 27? For those of you that have followed Little Peoples and know what's going on there, it's been going down drastically over the years. Just a few years ago, I don't have my notes with me, maybe five years ago, it was on five or six different courses, and Westview hosted five of the age divisions. Two years ago, as they took the other courses out of the tournament, we have added on up to nine age divisions, and last year, we took on the oldest boys division, and now we host 10 age divisions at Little Peoples. So, Little Peoples is basically held here at Westview, and at the KC par three course for the youngest kids. There is a separate college division that's played up at the Western Illinois Golf Course, but there's very few players there. So, we believe this would work very well for them, based on the numbers that they've had the last couple of years. On the people that play, the kids that play 19 through 27, out of the three age divisions that play back there, two of them are playing a shorter course than what we're proposing. The third division that plays there, plays it basically as it is right now. So, that division, and the concern that they have there is, that division has to play at a certain yardage to be eligible for national points, and I don't know how, understand how that works exactly, but we would have space to accommodate them on the front 18 somewhere. The division that's back there that would need to play longer is a girls' division. The boys in that same age division are already playing on 1 through 18, so we feel that we can add to that real easy. Number two, how will the Rough Rider League be able to play? That's a good question. Well, they could always still play there, play it as a shorter course. We could have them play on the 1 through 18 on a different night, or we believe we could have them still on the front 18 on Wednesday night. Last couple of years, we have expanded the men's club to go off 1 and 10, and the Rough Riders were going off 19, kind of in the same timeframe, but the numbers there are dwindling as well. We feel that we could combine both the men's club and the Rough Riders to the same time schedule, and keep them both, one on the front, one on the middle nine. What will happen to high school tournaments? And let me read the answer here. High school meets, usually the girls' teams and the boys JV teams, they could still possibly play their matches on those holes. Otherwise, we would accommodate them on holes 1 through 18, just as we do the boys varsity matches right now. In the past, many of the girls' matches that have just been dual matches, they played back on 19 through 27. Nothing against the girls, a lot of times, the girls have some very strong players, two or three, then as you get down the list, a little bit, some of them are a little bit not as good, so they wanted to play easier holes. We can accommodate them on 1 through 18, that's not a problem. And I'm guessing they'd want to play 10 through 18, because there's not as much water to go over. But, they can still have matches back there, I don't know what their requirements are. It's a great, it would be a great beginner course for them. Where will golfers play during an outings and tournaments? 1 through 18 are too crowded already. And the answer is, in the past, we always keep nine holes open for play. We would still do that. When we close 1 through 18 for an outing, we try to communicate this to the golfers as best we can, and based on some of the outings that we've had in the last couple of years, the outings are getting smaller as well. So, a lot of times, when we have a shotgun outing, they're only tying up nine holes. There's still a few of our outings that are big ones. We had a great first big outing last Friday, and shut the course down for the general public. They played on the back nine. It would be the same way. Who knows? If this were to happen, maybe the board tells me that we need to set a limit on the number of outings. I'd be okay with that. It's just a fine line I walk right now, when we're scheduling outings. What's too many, what's not enough? The more of those we have, obviously, they're good moneymakers for us, but then the season pass holders get a little disappointed that they don't always have access to the first 18. And again, we try to communicate that to the golfer, they have time to adjust their schedule, and if they can't, then they can always play the third nine that's always Number five, won't slower, less skilled golfers be forced to the main course and slow down play? No. I think the opposite is true, and the three gentlemen from the PGA of America said the exact same thing. They totally agreed with that. And I've heard a lot of concerns with golfers that play 1 through 18. They feel that the people that play on the third nine now are going to be forced to play 1 through 18, and going to make it more crowded. We feel if we do a nice job with this third, new third nine, that it's going to attract more golfers. We're trying to attract new golfers, but I like to go out there and practice on the third nine and be able to hit my driver. Golfers will still be able to do that. But, we also feel, though, that if we do this, we would make a very attractive, cheaper price, that when a newer golfer comes in and wants to play nine holes or 18 holes, if it's a cheaper, more attractive price, instead of going 1 through 18, we might attract them to go through 19 through 27. The last part here is, again, kind of going off track here a little bit, but one of the things that the PGA of America's been pointing out to us is, golfers are looking for faster, faster rounds of golf. I don't know what the hurry is, everyone comes out here, and most everyone has a good time, but they must have family at home that they want to get back to. There's other things going on, soccer practice, baseball, softball, so everyone's looking for quicker nine holes. If somebody wanted a quick hour nine hole round, we think we could do that with this
This is all, again, very preliminary, as I said at the beginning, this is just our estimate, based on now. We've been using the figure of about a half a million dollars. Looking at it, it might be somewhat less than that, I have $426,000 for the development project here. So, we decide to move forward, this just talks about the cost, and this just shows a funding option. Again, this is way down the road, we haven't decided to move there. We haven't decided to move there. But what it really intends to show is that potentially, while Westview is still making money in most years, you could do a debt certificate or bond, which is some sort of bond, I'll call it bonds, once you're familiar with the term bonds, and pay it off over time. This shows a 10-year scenario. And then Westview still has reserves, has a little over $270,000 in that range of reserves right now. The annual payment on that $300,000 bond would be $41,000. This just shows expected income. I think I'm fairly conservative on buckets of balls. We do 40-plus rounds of golf. If we can get 10,000 of the 40,000 golfers to hit a bucket of balls either before or after a round, and then have another 10 or so show up when the course might have been closed, or as lessons, or something else, you'd get there. We've surveyed other facilities, and they're doing that, or quite a bit more than that in some fairly small towns that have ranges attached with the golf course. I just threw in some fees. We'd be able to do lessons, so this just has a hypothetical lesson number. That's probably the most, I guess I'll call it, soft number, just the idea is that we could do lessons, we could do a group lesson, learn to play golf. You have 15 people show up for 10 sessions, learn to play golf, charge them 30 bucks for it, and generate some income there. I have the expected expenses right there for some additional labor, ball replacement, and equipment maintenance there, and for a net of about $69,000. Again, very preliminary, but this shows the range of what we have. That 69 well covers the 41,000 expense we would have annually, and then that doesn't account for perhaps any reductions in maintenance costs and things like that, and additional revenue we might get through the Pro Shop or the Players Grill as people come here to do. So again, very preliminary numbers, but just to show you, everybody asks, how are we going to pay for it? Well, this is a way we could pay for it, or somebody could write us a check to that. Do you, we, no, go ahead.
Thanks, staff. You'll have a chance here to ask questions next. I just want one point. As you've heard multiple times, this is very preliminary. So at the end of this meeting, I hope no one's expecting some dramatic roll call vote by the board of thumbs up, thumbs down. At the earliest, it's five or six months before the board would take official action on this, so I want to make that point. If you do need to leave early, you've got other commitments, we understand that. The surveys that I mentioned for you guys to fill out are up here on the corner of the table. So if you need to leave early, just feel free, come up here and grab one, fill it out, hand it here to our trustee, Jeff Anken, and he'll take care of that. So now proceeding with our meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of suspending the rules, so we may hear the public speak to us, say aye?
Aye.
All right. So now I've got the list of people that signed up. If you've come in late and didn't sign the papers to speak, we're not that strict, we'll still allow you to, but it's just nice to have a record of who's here. So first one I've got, I hope it says Dick Foster.
Can you come up here, please? I'm far the facility. I played in Florida two years ago on a facility like this, where they had 18 holes, and they had a back executive. We played one in the morning, one in the afternoon. It was very nice. I think I saw more kids back there, and this was Florida in the wintertime, probably spring break or something, but I think it will really help the youth to come out. When the youth come out and play that back nine, I mean, I know there's a bunch of old gray-haired guys here, they don't like climbing that hill back there, and they play it maybe two or three times a year. I think this would be a good facility. It would really help the youth and encourage golf in the area.
Thank you. I got a jack.
My take on this is, a lot of the questions I had, previously had, have been answered by the presentation. However, it also begs a couple of other simple questions. First of all, it's based upon the premise that they're going to be able to attract new golfers. Folks, realistically, the population in this area hasn't increased by any relevant amount for how many decades now? Isn't it entirely possible that what we've actually done has reached its saturation point? Now, don't get me wrong, I am in favor of a lot of what they're talking about, even at the expense of one of my favorite holes, which is number 25. But we're still talking a half a million dollars based upon the idea of attracting golfers in an area with a static population, and that is my one concern.
I'd like to direct your attention to the total pass sales sheet. It's gone down the last two years. Is, are these, what, the statement is made, they've gone down, but I have not heard a reason as to why they've gone down. And my second question is, are these new amenities that is being proposed, are they going to bring those members back? Is that what we're trying to accomplish here, to bring the members back that have left? And has anybody checked with the members that have left Westview, since the sales is down, why they left? Thank you.
During, on your handout, we have the frequently asked questions. These questions are very good, so we'll just expand that list, and it'll be redistributed and updated as we progress through the next few months. So if you don't hear the answer tonight, maybe you don't know it, or somebody's got a good point, it's like, oh, yeah.
Let me respond real quickly for the next one, just to respond to that. I don't have it in my hand.
There we go. Just a response to the last one. We're trying to attract new golfers, and we're trying to attract, to bring back the golfers that have left, whether they've left for another facility. When they say lapsed golfers, I'm thinking of golfers that have quit playing, you know, that haven't played in a couple of years. That's the kind of golfer we're trying to bring back. Some of that has lapsed, and we're trying to find new golfers. And if that new golfer is a junior or an adult, we don't care. Just trying to find new golfers.
Yeah, has there been a income survey or question? I think that's a great idea. Somebody wants to see some pass holders, especially if they're a season pass holder for a while, then they don't. We used to, a letter or something like that, why, you know, we missed you type of thing, but I mean, that might help inform the decision.
I agree. I agree.
That's a good idea. Okay. Next speaker, Vern Hatcher.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell you that I'm representing the Knights of Columbus tonight, and we already have a driving range, and we already have a par three golf course. And as far as I, as far as I know, we don't intend to close down. So I think your expected income figure here of $75,000 is not going to be realized if you're going to compete with us, and we already lose money on our par three course. I don't think you're going to do any better. I also wanted to question the fact that I haven't seen anything in here about capital expenditures, particularly for equipment. I think you're going to need some more equipment if you're going to do what you're doing here. Just for example, you're going to have a driving range, and I don't think you have a, what I call a ball picker-upper, a ball retriever. You're going to have to buy one. They don't come cheap. That's all I had to say. Go. You're out of order.
Do you have any idea how many buckets they see go through a year?
No, I couldn't even really take a guess, but I, but I know that you've got here labor at $4,000, and I think that's, that's way, way low, because ours is, I know for a fact ours is a lot more than that, and I know our ball replacement is a lot more than that. But just a few things.
The $500,450 figure includes the, we price ball pickers and all those items there. Won't guarantee it, but you know, a lot of earthwork there. And the labor figure for us, I think, is a little low, because I think at your facility, the labor is the range. We have people running around here all day. To have someone who's a cart guy, who might then, in a lull, having stocked all the carts needed for the next hour, go hop on a ball picker, go pick balls, and we stock additions. So I think that's why the labor cost might be a little different than yours, is because we're not running it as, the range is just another thing that we do out here with a lot of workers already there, and that we think we can fit it in there. So that's the reason that that number's not particularly high. If this were a standalone range, it would be $10 an hour times 10 hours a day times however number of people.
Hi. I'd just like to say this sounds like a great plan, but I don't think at the expense of giving up the 27 holes that we currently have. This is the only public golf course in Quincy, Illinois, and I think if we want to look at attracting individuals to come to the community, a public golf course is one of the factors, among many others, that they look at. We now have 27 good holes of golf, and I would hate to see that disappear, to develop a driving range and a par three course. And I think most people that want to play golf don't look to a par three course, they look to what they consider to be a normal golfing experience, and the longer holes, what we normally see on the 27 holes that we have right now. The other comment that I want to make just real quickly is, you know, I hear so much about money in Westview, and obviously, it's important that all facilities be as self-supporting as possible, but I question, is Westview being held to a different standard than all other park district activities? Are the trails self-supporting? Are the swimming pools self-supporting? Is the marina self-supporting? I don't know, maybe they all are, but I question, is Westview being held to a different standard? If we have this here as a community activity, a park district activity, some activities require subsidization, some don't. There are a variety of things we can look at in terms of income for the course, aside from what's being looked at here also, and I think a number of those things have come out in some of the surveys that have already been sent in. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this meeting. I do want to congratulate Matt and the staff out here, because I think we do have a great 27 holes of golf. I don't want to see it changed. I don't think, one thing is, and Mayor Anken has mentioned that, I don't think we should be in the business of putting two golf ranges out of business, and I'm afraid that's what's going to happen. In fact, I know one that would leave town. So I just hope that you take a real good look at this. Now, I come out and I play, and we're all worried about the increase in golfers. I think part of that has to do with, there are a lot more golf courses in this neck of the woods, and a short distance, and they're all nice. They've all been improved. And that does hurt, because you don't get people from Camp Point, Monstirling, over in Missouri coming over here as much, because they just don't have to anymore. I really, and I haven't heard yet from anybody here, I pay X number of dollars, I'm an old man, so it's not very darn much to pay 27 holes. If this passes, am I just going to get 18 holes and pay another amount for the other nine? I haven't heard that yet. If that's the case, why not just raise the price a little bit, get a little more income for what we've got?
They don't like you right now.
I know they don't. I know they don't. And I understand, I understand that. I understand that. But I also know that these guys got to get paid more, there's more income. Every time we use water out here, it costs money, and, you know, dry seasons, it's going to cost more. That's why our income was down last year. I mean, it didn't rain. So I just hope things stay the way they are. I love this golf course, and I love to play, and I can go out at third nine and practice all I want, and have a good time. Thank you very much.
I'm George Shrag, and I'm also, I'm the financial secretary of the Knights of Columbus. As well, I play at Westview, and I would like to thank the Park Board Commissioners for having this hearing. I think it's great. I do have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. What if, and I understand we're not going to interact with questions and answers, but what, my one question, okay. What if the additional revenue derived from this project does not cover the bonds? Then what do we do? Okay? I understand it's a 10-year project, so just a question.
Let me ask, if you don't mind. When the original project, the renovation was done in 97, there was a $103,000 payment each year for 15 years. That payment was done with tax dollars. I guess the answer is if fees from Westview don't support the repayment of the project, it falls back on the tax.
Okay. Thank you. In the handout, I see lessons is added as part of revenue. As far as I've always known, lessons go to the pro, or in this case, to Matt Burry. They're actually going to come back into the general fund, the money derived from lessons?
Right now, any group lessons that I do, that goes to park district. Goes to Westview's fund. If I do individual lessons on my own, away from Westview, that is mine. And just to answer any other questions, because I've heard them come up many times, I make a flat salary here. I don't get any percentage of golf cars, any percentage of green fees, zero percent of merchandise. I make a flat salary. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
But still, I have a contract, and if you leave, we're going to pay you a bunch of
One other item, excuse me, item in the handout is the reduced maintenance costs. Now, we're still going to have nine greens, we're still going to have nine tees, we're still going to have the same amount of grass to cut, but we're going to have one big practice tee. And as far as I know, people like to hit off grass, not off rubber mats. So we're going to have a practice tee that's about four times the size of any of the other tees in the proposal. So I don't know how you're going to have reduced maintenance costs when you've got much more stuff like that to take care of. Again, a hypothetical question. Golf 2.0, why can't we handle golf 2.0 at Westview and at the KCs? We have teaching facilities at both places. Pros come out to KCs all the time and give lessons, okay? And one last thing, has anybody ever considered what wall-to-wall golf cart paths would cost and what revenue they would generate, because you'd be able to play when it rains, when it's muddy, cart path golf? Thank you.
I'm a little bit out of my element this evening, since I'm not a golfer, and anyone who's played with me can tell you that. But I do have a dog in this fight, because if I would open the shades, I can see my house. I live on South 30th Street, and I see several neighbors here in the audience. Again, I don't have a dog in the fight, I'm not a golfer. One thing I'm concerned about, and I know some neighbors that I see in the audience are, we really don't want a fence. I really don't want to be sitting on my patio looking at a Scottish potty, and I really don't want to be looking at a storage facility. So I know we worked, you know, several others long and hard to get rid of the fence. know we worked, you know, several others long and hard to get rid of the fence between the golf court and the golf course and the houses on 30th Street. So anyway, just my comment. Again, I'm not a golfer, but looks like a good plan to me, from what I know. So, thank you.
It's a little different being on this side of the table versus that side of the table. Do I get to charge, like, at the pool meetings? No, that's a whole different thing. I came up with several ideas. I understand the concept, but what about doing a hybrid? Instead of rebuilding the third nine, you just add more tees. You shorten the tees, you've still got a par 34, but you also have the executive course. And on the days that the course is busy or whatever, you only make it the executive course. Or whatever, just certain days. But you have short tees, but you still have the long tees. The driving range, you don't need some big, long driving range. Anybody who knows, my family's been in the golf business for a long, long time. My brother was a pro in, a, you know, teaching pro out in Cleveland. He worked in a domed driving range. I'm not suggesting we build a domed range. But it was short. You hit to a wall and it fell. Between the cart shed and 27 green, you got room. You hit into the wall, you can even make it almost maintenance-free because you slope it, all the balls come back into a collection zone, you augur them back into the feeding system. When you put your token in, the balls are already collected. Zero maintenance. Third thing, and this one's probably not going to be popular, you talked about we have to subsidize the rolling stock, re-initiate the dollar fee, the capital improvement fee. For those of you who play 100, 150 rounds a year, I'm sorry, you use the course 150 times, pay the buck. But, and refresh my memory, and I don't think, Tom, you might have been the only one on the board at the same time, I wasn't, Chris, we lost the pumps out on five, back in, what was it, about five years ago? Oh, somewhere in there. Yeah, 2001. We had $90,000 in expense to replace those pumps. It cost the taxpayers nothing. We had the money in the bank from the capital improvement fund. So we could buy the pumps we needed. You're still using those, aren't you, Rick? I see you're shaking your head. So that was a good investment, and it didn't cost the taxpayers a dime. And it kept the course running. So reinstall that. If you do 45,000 rounds a year, you made 43, $45,000. The flip side, and as I've heard somebody say before, what's different about the Westview than other parks? If we've got to use taxpayer money to support rolling stock, new lawnmowers, new cart path, whatever, we do it for every other park in town, why is here different? The other thing is, and I've heard George say it, the mayor say it, let's not get in competition with the par three at KC, let's get in business with them. Utilize them, make some sort of reciprocation agreement, something. We've already got the facility there, let's not reinvent the wheel. Okay? And the last thing, and you want to get revenues up, bring back the 10-round, 18-hole punch card. That was one of the silliest things I ever saw, that we got rid of that. You want to see rounds go away? I know I'm one of them. I won't pay for nine holes and then have to still fork out money. My wife only gives me so much cash at a time. Shh, we're not telling her. But I only have some, you know, I'm only going to buy that once or twice a year. I want to come in here, throw that card down, and play my 18. I don't want to have to pay extra money every time I walk out. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen, and ma'am.
I just have a couple of quick questions. I don't know if you can answer them. I have four grandsons that I bought passes for last year, and I bought passes for them this year to play 19 through 27. And is that still going to be honored, like in the future, if you'd go through with this renovation?
The short answer, that's too big, gentlemen.
Okay.
We talked about restructuring all the pricing with, if the course is redesigned, so we can't answer that definitively right now. But I think it makes sense.
I mean-
If the course is redesigned, it won't be till next year, so this year's past.
Okay, just one, one point there. Like with smaller children, I'm sure they're not going to want to come out on a front 18. So that's what I, I guess my concern, if we want to bring in younger golfers, you know, to me, we want to get them at that age, get them into golf, so they learn the game. And it's a perfect place back there. Now, I'm not far against the renovations, but I was just wondering about the, you know, passes for the grandchildren, or the younger adults, I should say. And that's all I got.
Hi. All right. I just have a couple of comments. One is that when you talk about the cost of golf, and wanting to bring back golfers and all of that kind of thing, is there ever a discussion about what it costs these wanting to bring back the families? Because that's like over $100 almost, to just come and play a round of golf, if you think about that. Is that a reason why families aren't coming? Is because it's so expensive? I mean, in all honesty, that's why we weren't coming, was because it would, we would come out here and it would cost almost $100 for golf and a cart, and then it would be six-hour round. And I have laundry to do. So I don't have time for a six-hour round. So I just wanted to throw that out, as maybe a thought that that's why there's a decrease for families. Um, the other-
Before you want to know about our Sunday family plan that was drawn out here.
Right. Well, you know, Sunday's the only day you have to do, you know, some, some kind of things. I know that there's some things that are available, but I would just like to say golf is an expensive sport. And so maybe that's a reason why you have a decrease, you know, in people doing that.
That's exactly why this plan would fit into that, because it would be cheaper, faster, friendly, if we're trying to get the families all involved.
But that brings up my other concern, which is my number one issue, is that right now, it really takes a lot of time when the kids don't, I have a high school golfer. And so when, let's say Quincy High has a tournament here, the only place that the girls' golf team, or the Q&amp;D boys' golf team, or the Liberty Kids, or whoever, has to play is going to be the back nine. And it's already a struggle for them to go practice, because this is the only public golf course for them to come and practice at. So if there's a tournament that's being held by the Quincy High boys, and all those golfers can't get on to come and practice, then that also throws out all your regular golfers who are past members, they don't have anywhere to go. There's really, they're really, they don't have anywhere to go. So we, we actually joined a private club just so that he could practice. And that's exactly what he, you know, what we utilize it for. So that's, that's my biggest concern with this whole plan, is that there's not going to be enough time or space for all those kids to practice. I think it would be great to have a driving range here, because when he comes out to play a tournament here, he needs to be loosened up. But luckily, the KC is very accommodating. When they do have the little peoples, or there is a match out here, they will open early. And so, you know, if you drive past there, all those places are open at the KC for those kids to use. So that's just my comment.
Chris Hoag is my coach, so I hope I don't say anything you don't like. But, you guys were talking about how you want to make the third nine easier, so golfers who aren't as good will, like, feel better about going out. Well, in my opinion, currently, the third nine is relatively easier. It's got no water, and it has one sand trap on 22. High school golfers are, use the third nine a lot. And we need to push ourselves. And with four par fours and five par threes, I don't feel like we can really do that and really improve. And then you mentioned putting the girls and the JV on the front 18 with the varsity boys. And we already have a hard time squeezing all four golf teams, plus Liberty and Payson who practice here, on 27 holes. So I don't think trying to fit four matches after school, before it gets dark, on 18 holes is going to work. And the best way to practice golf is to get out there and actually play. So although a practice range would be nice and a good idea, I think actually getting out and playing golf on the third nine and challenging yourself is a more effective way to get good at golf. So, thank you.
Being a perennial third nine player all the time, I have enjoyed playing back there. It's a great place. And if I look out here in the audience, I can see where they're coming from, and looking at where you're looking at, and trying to get new golfers. Because I think the average age that we're sitting out here is 60-plus. So we do have a problem. And I think as we go down through the thing, that's something that you're going to have to work on and figure out how to do. I love the third nine. I'll tell you what. In fact, I think it's harder than the other two nines. I detest playing it, but since the first two nines are always filled, I play it. And I love it. That's there. But we've got to look at the age that we're sitting out here. We're looking at my age, that's sitting in here. How do we get, you know, like, my kids playing out there and things like that?
Thank you. I really appreciate Matt and Ed and the board looking at trying to improve golf and, and make it better and increase the number and all that. That does nothing but help my business. But I guess what I look at it in my gut, I really can't see, you know, why we do it, only because you've got KC, you've got a nine, a par three course there, you've got a driving range that's underutilized, you've got Mark Christiansen's facility that's underutilized, and we're going to add another one. I mean, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me on that respect. Would it be a nicer driving range? Probably, yeah. We'd have, we'd have some sand traps, and we'd have maybe a bigger tee area, we'd be grass, that kind of thing. That would all be nice, but at the expense of government competing against private enterprise, I think Mark Christiansen would, Christiansen would probably be out of business. Mike Wenzing is now a teaching pro at KC. He's a Class A professional, many, many years of, you know, experience at Jeff City. I think we're real lucky to get him back. You've got Mark Christiansen, which obviously can teach, since Luke Guthrie is doing pretty well on the pro tour. I look at your expense and revenue thing, and I, it just in my gut, it doesn't make sense, because I don't see how you can, how you can add basically three greens, traps, fairways, you know, more teeing area. I don't know. I just think you're being really conservative in your, in your estimates of, or aggressive, I guess you could say, of your estimates, that you're going to make $69,000. You know, I think a partnership with your KC, with Christiansen, if you want to bring more golfers in, they're both great guys, they're great, great people over there, let's do that, instead of spending, you know, $450,000 of taxpayer money. I know you're a government agency, we can tax people, and we just move on, and we spend the money, and we're done with it. Okay? That's fine. But I just am not, you know, we get tired of that kind of thing. And then you've got a golf course that produces 46,000 rounds last year, 40,000 the year before, upwards, upwards, upwards. I got to tell you something, in my business, Chris Hoag knows this, Dave Hoag knows this too, you get a golf course that produces 46,000 rounds, is a kick butt golf course. Acorns Golf Course, privately owned in Waterloo, Illinois, just did 24,000 rounds last year, made money. Allen Brier, which many of you may know, great golf course in Waterloo, excellent course, did 31,000 rounds, made money. Maybe we need to look at what's going on here. Why? I know Rick Miles does an amazing, amazing job maintaining this golf course on a low budget. You know, I mean, you should compliment him, he's amazing. You know, why are we doing 40,000 rounds, 38,000 rounds, not making money? I don't get it. I mean, I'd have to look at the financials, and maybe I'm not smart enough to tell you what it is, but something's not right there. So anyway, I guess I think what we ought to do is take a step back, and I think you should use what's in Quincy right now. Somebody said the population's not growing. It isn't, unfortunately, for a great city. But I think we'd be spending money, and I don't think it would increase, I don't see how that would increase golf play. I don't think how that, adding a driving range, making virtually have a, you have a par three golf course now, 27 holes, I mean, it's not a big golf course, it's a short golf course, okay? It's virtually par three now. Adding the tees, I didn't think about that brilliant idea, I think, Dave. But anyway, I think there's a lot of things you need to really, really consider on that. But thank you for considering it. I remember that night like it was yesterday. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Many of the speakers have covered some of the things that are on my remarks. I'm sorry, I only had three copies. The typos are at no extra charge. I, I appeared tonight as a friend of Scotty Glasgow, and just having been through about five months of pretty intensive preparation for the tournament that brought this golf course some extra funds, and I was thrilled to do it. And I also appear as what I will term a, sort of a self-appointed council for all the youth and beginning golfers of the future, because that's where most of the golfers of the present here in Quincy were made, on that back nine after having been given a shove by Scotty Glasgow, and in Chris's case, by his father. But I want to emphasize some things that nobody else covered. One of them's a unique experience of mine. Your third nine is a treasure. It's just a treasure. And I want to tell you a story about that treasure. I was, I wish I could remember the year, but it was between '85 and '88. I was on a plane coming back from Phoenix. And there was this guy a few seats from me that looked really familiar. And I didn't pay much attention. I thought I'd seen him in a golf magazine. I didn't know who he was. And we had on a little commuter plane that flew from St. Louis to, from, we got to St. Louis, to Quincy, and the guy's right next to me. So I said, are you going to Quincy? He said, yeah. We introduced ourselves. And, and he told me that he was coming to Quincy, Illinois, to look at a golf hole, because he wanted to incorporate the design of that golf hole into a prestige course that he was building in the Phoenix suburbs. His name is Ed Alt, he's dead now. He was a very renowned golf course architect. And I figured, okay, well, he's coming to look at the fourth hole at Quincy Country Club, or he's coming to look at the 12th hole at Quincy Country Club. He was coming to look at the 22nd hole at Westview. And he spent a whole day walking that hole and talking to the personnel who were here then. And then he went back and built it. And I go on at some length in my written remarks about why that was. But you have a treasure here. What do you do when you have a treasure? You promote it, you foster it, you nurture it, you market it. You also have some monopoly considerations here. You have a monopoly. You have a 27-hole public golf course facility. It's the only one between here and Edwardsville, or between here and Peoria, take your choice. You lose that advantage if you give up the back nine as a freestanding, I use the term championship nine advisedly. You also have a freestanding nine-hole golf course. That is the only, if somebody wants to play public golf on a freestanding nine-hole golf course in Quincy, Illinois, they got to come here. The other thing I'd like to add that I don't think anybody has, has brought up, and I'm skipping over a lot of my prepared remarks, you can read them at your, at your leisure. I don't know that you have the data to make this decision yet. I've watched people come in here, when I was on the, doing the committee work, I would sit around and kind of watch what was going on. And there's no way that the people who sell a hot dog or a-
And there's no way that the people who sell a hot dog or a golf glove know or record whether that person came in off the back nine, the third nine to buy that hot dog or that golf glove or whether they came in off the, what I'll call a championship 18. I don't think you have enough data. A lot of times, I don't even think you have true recovery. Sure, the starter knows and maybe the guy who takes the money in here knows, but I don't think it's recorded anyplace as to the true usage of the, of the third nine. I remember many times, many years ago, it happened several times with Chris, we started out to play one nine and ended up going off the back nine for one reason or another. And there was, there was no recovery of that then and I don't think there's any recovery of that now. So I think you lack the data to make a decision that involves tearing down a treasure or just a true treasure. The other thing is that, and I understand that every green would be torn up and not, not every green would, every hole would be a complete rebuild. I understand that and I appreciate Matt's explanation. But if you found out you were wrong and the demand went up, rebuilding a nine-hole golf course is about a million dollar proposition. That would be a big mistake. That's not a mistake I'd want my name on. Finally, and I, I very much appreciate the opportunity to talk and I appreciate all of Ed's overview, but I think the, the choice as couched between building this or substantially this and doing nothing is a false choice. You have another choice and that is to do what Scotty Glasgow always did. The solution to golf course operation is making golfers. You can make golfers with the nine you have. We've made generations and generations of golfers in this town using that third nine. And I don't know what your marketing efforts are. I have a couple of suggestions in my written remarks as to how that nine can be marketed more effectively for both beginning golfers and children. And my creativity is very limited, so I'm sure really good marketing people could come up with better ways. But if you want that nine or you want these facilities used optimally, then market them optimally. And I'm not criticizing anybody. I have greatest respect for your Director of Golf and for Ed himself, but there's always another way to sell something that's already a monopoly and already a treasure. The last thing I'll add, I've seen, I've heard it now twice, that this change is being sold under the guise of being compliant with Golf 2.0. Golf 2.0 was rolled out in the March edition of Golf Digest, which appeared in the middle of February. And does anybody in the panel, there's some golfers here, remember what the headline of that rollout article was? The lead graph and the headline, the actual style of the story was, "Let's Play Nine." Unless you have questions, that's all I have.
I just had the privilege of speaking with the, the ex-president of the PGA from last year. And their big thing was time for nine and that goes in right with what you say. And we had some discussions about that and there's obviously pros and cons, but I don't think, I don't think the board's going to do, I mean, there's going to be a great deliberation for both ways, but we appreciate all your input for sure.
That's the last person on the list that's signed up, but if anyone else would now like to step forward, sure, come on up.
My name is John Turnier and my granddaughter is a high school golfer. She's a pretty darn good one, too. And we came here to Westview to play eight years ago. She had been playing at another club in town, but I found her golf experience there was not the same as what we were running into out there in the real world with, with the tournaments we were playing and the courses we were playing. She has the best of both worlds here. She has the third nine that we could get on and practice when we want to, even if there's an outing or a tournament going on over here. On the other hand, she also has the front 18, which more approximates the conditions that she runs into out there in the real world. And I'm just, and Chris knows that when we play high school golf, that we, we play on some subpar courses and then we play on some top-notch courses. And that's true also of the tours she plays in the summertime. So while I applaud your efforts and I, and I would do everything I could to support what you want to do to raise revenues and paying a dollar extra every time she plays wouldn't bother me at all, but I would ask you not to make any changes, any significant changes in what we have. It's been good for her and it's, I think it's been good for the community. So that's my only comment and it's good to see two of, two of my friends on this, on the park board and John, I haven't seen you for a while. So thank you.
Would anyone else like to step forward and speak? Sure, come on up. Oh, no, I just let her, I just let her.
My name's Michael Baker. The question that I have, having a two-year-old son who already has a plastic golf club in his hand, is I think losing the first tee program was a big hit to getting new golfers, getting kids to play golf and stuff like that. The addition of a facility, driving range would be great, but it's something that they can practice on. I've got pictures of me and my son already out at the KC green, him with my little Scotty Cameron putting around chasing golf balls. So that, that's great, but I think bringing that program back might be a good way to get kids a chance to play also. Not necessarily where they're playing, but getting them playing and it will eventually get them to play all the courses all around, not just necessarily the driving range here, KC. But they'll, they'll get out here and play too, just like my son will when he's old enough to play.
There was another hand in the back. Yeah, come on up, come on up.
Some of you may know who I am, some of you may not. My name is Ryan Barnes. I worked out here for approximately eight years and I just have a couple of comments and maybe a few questions. First of all, I think what we have right now is really just tremendous, for lack of a better term. I, I love the, especially the front 18 and the third nine as it is right now. We have a great facility and Rick and his staff along with Matt, they do a tremendous job. I know how hard these guys work and it's very, at times, underappreciated how much effort they put into the course as it is right now. I just wanted to say that. In terms of the amount of play that would, or the amount of buckets of balls that would be hit, I wonder how many of those places had two other facilities that also offered a range in that same location? I wonder how many of those places where you got those numbers for the range balls were places that, that might be the only range in that facility or in that vicinity, excuse me, as opposed to right here. We have, if, if you like Christiansen's Academy, great. If you hate it, great. Same with the KCs, but we do have two other options right now. And so I'd hate to see a facility here perhaps run the KCs out or, or attempt to or whatever the case might be. Also, I just wanted to say that the summer pass that we offer right now, or at least that we had for the past few years, it's approximately $25 to $30 for the third nine for youth to play during the summer, is a tremendous asset. I think we get about 200 roughly kids up to age 18 that can tee off before noon on the third nine, which helps generate a whole new generation of golfers. It's really too early to, to know if these 12-year-olds, 13-year-olds are going to play for life, but it's great to get them started at a young age. And my last comment was, I just wondered if it would be possible to consider, just an idea, a driving range perhaps teeing off near the highway over by number 25 and lengthening number 20 into two par three holes, which would eliminate a lot of the upfront costs and maintenance. And you should still have enough room along that side if you wanted to still use the driving range idea. Thank you.
Anyone else want to step forward and speak? Yep, Todd?
Todd Iler. P-Y-L-E-R.
13-12 Kingsley Court.
Good evening. My name is Todd Iler and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you both for the work that you've already done, the, the presentation that you've given. I did not know a lot of what you proposed tonight and I liked some of what I saw. Many of the speakers however, made many points that I came here to talk about and they've stolen my thunder, but there's two points that I think have not been raised that I'd like to touch on. One, I believe the gentleman's name was Mr. Baker just touched on the first tee. I was on the board for the first tee, or on the first tee for some time. The first tee as we know is now no longer here. I was not on the board when the first tee disbanded, but my question to you is, if part of this program is to encourage and promote youth golf, what is the Quincy Park District doing right now for youth golf? What programs do they have? What programs are at this facility right now? As I know, and I may be wrong, I think you have a couple etiquette classes coming up and I don't know of anything else. If, if you do, great, then that's my ignorance, we're not knowing, but what programs have been started, what programs have been developed out here and what are the numbers that you're servicing? What can't you do with the current course for a youth program that requires this plan? Now, at some point, if you promote the youth programs and it grows to such a, to such a point where the current facility cannot house it, then maybe this is more feasible or something like this is, is more feasible. But what are we doing now? Several people have touched on, we need to get younger youth and more involved, but right now, what is the park district doing? And I think that needs to be looked at first for, I think this is putting the cart before the horse when we use the argument of youth golf and expanding that. Likewise, they've already touched on several speakers, the multiple driving range facilities we have. If you want to have a place to hit, if you don't like hitting mats between the shed and the course, has anybody thought about or looked into a possible simulation driving range? What would it cost to house a building, maybe right here in this grassy area, to have a simulated driving range? That could still be utilized during the winter. Lessons could still be given. People could come out during the winter and they could hit a bucket of balls. You could even expand that program or use that by, I believe you can buy programs to play other courses. I would be willing to come out here with my son during the winter and play, pay some money to play a simulated Pebble Beach or something like that. I don't know what that cost is, but that's a thought that crossed my mind. If you want somewhere to hit, why not that? Because now you can utilize that during the winter as well. So those are two points that I think haven't been touched on and I thought would be important. Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to comment on the, the simulation. I know that was around 20 years ago or so and it kind of took its wane from a lot of places. I know R&amp;R Golf still has one and, and doesn't have it in existence because nobody wanted to go do it. They had a big complex in St. Louis that lasted about four or five years that we used to go down to and actually have eight of us go and, and do what you're speaking of. But I think those have gone away. And I don't know if Matt would like to speak on what we're doing for junior golf out here. I know he does junior golf. I don't know if you want to speak to what we are doing out here or not.
What you're referring to Todd is with the etiquette class and Ryan spoke about it a little bit as well, the junior summer pass. It's something that's fairly new. I think we started that about four or five years ago. I kind of copied that from where I grew up, how I started playing golf. It was much cheaper back then, but it, we started at $25 and the kids could play all summer long on a third nine hole with that summer pass. And the only requirement is that they have to go through an etiquette class. And so last year, the numbers were way down. They were six and five, I'm guessing. But there are many years where, previous years where they've been up over 150 and it's very popular. And I don't know what the reason was that for last year. Maybe it was too hot, I don't know. That's been a very popular, and our hope with that pass, and, and we want to continue that pass, is that they get hooked on it at an early age and get tired of playing just the third nine like we've heard him say and want to go to the big 18 after a year or two on that summer pass. So that's really, we try doing etiquette, junior pass, junior, junior teaching classes. We've done, used to have a very popular junior program called The Little Links that Mark Christiansen I believe started years ago. The last few years, we were likely to get 10 kids involved with that. And in conjunction with that junior summer pass, it's just there have not been enough kids. We'd like to bring that back. And at one time, I believe there were four to six teams and maybe Ryan knew more than I would, 12 to 15 kids on each team. We had, the last two years that we did that program, we had a hard time beating 12 kids at all. So we would like to get that program, it's a great program, but we've got to get, get the kids back first. And I agree with Michael. I would love to have some kind of program like the first tee. It doesn't need to be the first tee. We could come up with our own and we'd like to do that and that might happen.
Anyone else want to address the board? Okay. Matt or Ed, do you have anything else you want to add? All right. Anybody on the board want to say anything? Yeah. All right, let's, well, back to, make a.
I'd like to make a motion, we resume the rules.
A motion, second in favor resuming normal business rules? Say aye. All right, suppose we're back in regular session. I just want to make a few comments, just speaking from my own opinions after what I've heard and the other board members are free to do so, but the comments regarding the KFC and competing with them half mile away, to me, that's very important. That's a big issue to me. That was my first response when I heard this plan. So I'd rather than compete with them, I'll maybe sidetrack, with other programs such as Quinsippy Soccer, the YMCA stuff, we've always tried to not compete, just partner with them and not conflict with them and, and give people as much opportunity to do things as possible. With the KFC, I'd like to do something along those lines myself. I don't know the specific answers, but rather than compete, it should be a partnership. And I don't know how we can work through that, but there's a lot of good ideas that came out tonight and I'd rather see us go that direction. Regarding the, the ideas about perhaps a hybrid, hybrid type renovation are appealing to me. Rather than completely doing everything, you know, if there's a simpler, cheaper approach, we can do that and be less of a gamble. I don't, I think it was Tony or somebody's made the point about if you make this decision, it's hard to reverse. So I'm using the word gamble. That's, in my mind, this is a risk. And then the other point somebody made, if, if it doesn't follow through or the finances don't work out, where does the burden lie? Well, if the fees aren't going to pay for those bonds, it's back on the taxpayers. And we did that for 15 years. Regarding the subsidy question, those are valid, but as you've seen tonight, taxpayers are paying for payroll and insurance, social security, those type of things. In addition to, you know, if you look at the averages, well over $100,000 for the last five years. I'm okay with that, but at what point is it too much? At what point do the taxpayers, should they not be burdened to continue to keep the course at its, at its current standard? So I'm okay with where we're at now with the subsidy, subsidization, but we got to, we got to slow that trend. And I don't know the exact answers yet, but tonight was, to me, very informative and very, I think everybody did a great job. You presented some very good ideas for all of us to consider.
I'd just like to echo a few things. First of all, I'm not sure who said it, but doesn't Rick Miles do a great job? I also don't usually do this, but I agree with a lot of what Dave Hoag said. I heard a lot of applause earlier and I'm standing to see, a show of hands please, who would like to see the dollar come back? Thank you.
Oops. All right. You guys have any comments? You want to comment? I'm good. Okay, we're about done here. I have another quick survey I want to throw out there. Just, we've got the paper surveys, you all have a chance to fill those out, but just for a quick show of hands, I'm going to give you three options. One is, you're in favor of what you've seen tonight? Two, the other option is, keep the course the way it is? Or three, let's see if we can find something in the middle. There's your three choices. So if you're in favor of adopting or us pushing forward with this plan, please raise your hand. Okay? If you are. If you are in favor of, let's leave the course the way it is and let's minimize the changes, raise your hand. Okay? And if you are, would like us to pursue some middle ground, hybrid type solution per Dave, please raise your hand. Okay? All right? I guess that's going to wrap it up. Oh, you got me up? Right. Surveys are up here, we're going to pass those out. We've got, you may have pencils. Take your time, put your thoughts into those, we will look at those and those will be compiled and appreciate your time and your comments tonight. Need a motion to adjourn?